Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for showing up and coming to our workshop. This is not a regular board meeting, so I'm not going to call anything or take a roll call vote. Simply just want to say thank you for attending. We are going to begin our executive summary, our comprehensive study, on preliminary plans to reconsolidate and restructure the district. So I'm going to turn this whole presentation over to Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll begin with a brief framing before turning it over to ERS, Education Resource Strategies, our partners in this work in terms of the data gathering. So just want to contextualize the conversation in terms of our approach and our need to implement the fundamental redesign of our school district. You've heard me talk of the fact that in order for us to maintain the viability of our school system in the future, that we need to implement this fundamental redesign. And I, along with all of you as a board, did commit to a process that would engage all of our stakeholders. And so I'm going to call to your attention this one pager that Christina just handed us, which kind of unpacks the different stages in the process. We are right now in the input phase, which entails community input and of course a comprehensive study, of which today we're going to get the executive summary for. Just grounding us on the fact that we engaged in this work, given our complex, ongoing complexity and our challenges around variability and disparity, quite frankly, and around opportunity and achievement of our students throughout our district, longstanding budget issues, right? Our nine years now are flat and reduced funding, our chef choice magnet related implications, declining enrollment, facilities that need significant attention that we do not have money to invest in, and increasing costs, given our students' needs that we must tend to. And so all of those together require us to step back and address the fact that we do have too many schools that are needed at the moment. And so you've heard me talk of the fact also that it's not just about facilities and enrollment. We have to take a step back and look at programmatic needs of our students. And through this process, we wanted to make sure that we ground the work in the decision-making moving forward in a way that's grounded on our principles and what it is that we believe as a community we value, hence the engagement process. And ERS is going to ground us, ground the data that they have lifted for us in the guiding principles. And so I'm going to ask ERS today, moving forward throughout the processes, they continue to ground those in those guiding principles that we all also contributed to during the board workshop and that our community has also contributed to. There are four steps, if you will, in this process. After the comprehensive study, we do move from the input phase to the recommendations and the feedback phase. And so there's significant engagement that will continue throughout the process. And of course, that is decision-making. And after that, we do continue with engagement with all of our stakeholders as we move into the implementation phase, which is around the planning process along with the models. And so I wanted to just give us the context, not only in terms of how we got here, how it is that we're going to get through the process. So I'm going to turn it over to ERS. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Can you all hear me? Okay. Great. My name's David Rosenberg. I'm a partner at Education Resource Strategies and had the pleasure to work with several of you over the last few months, just briefly here with other members of the team that's been working with Hartford Public Schools. So from my left, Joe Trerick Smith, that you'll remember from a recent workshop, Danielle Smith, Rachel Black, Emily Parfitt. If we have detailed questions and I rely on the team, I will, you'll forgive me if I do that.
A little louder.
Little louder.
Need to reject the mic.
Okay. So, sorry about that. So I'm David Rosenberg with ERS.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Will get this right.
There you go.
Anyway, thank you for having us. So if I, we have members of the team from ERS here as well, I was just introducing. And as we get into the work, if we have de-heel questions and we bring them into the conversation, you'll know why. So as the superintendent described, we're in the midst of this process of supporting the district around developing a model of excellence for what schools look like. And really, the underlying question in all of this work has been, knowing the situation that you're in right now, that we have here in the district, where, given the resource constraints that we have and the enrollment context, which we'll talk about, there are more schools than are sustainable to support. The question really is about, so what is the district building towards in this context? What do we want to have be true as a result of any changes that you all choose to make here in Hartford? And so the work that's happened so far has been around defining some guiding principles. And today, we'll be sharing some data and analysis that informs us about where Hartford Public Schools is today against those guiding principles, which in turn serve as implications for how the district moves forward over the next several weeks, months, and years. So our objectives for this period of time, and I'll look to you for guidance on timing and also if you'll, obviously, as questions come up, I know you'll not be shy about asking, to build a shared understanding among board members of the fact base embedded in the comprehensive study and then talk through some of the implications that those have as we develop districts models for excellence that you'll be reviewing in the coming weeks. And then, of course, we'll come back to the specifics on timeline and next steps, so you can see where things are going. So a bit of context in which we're operating, and I know you're familiar with this, but again, as part of the shared fact base. So the first piece of this that we want to talk about is just acknowledging that we have deep and significant student needs within Hartford. And as a result, related to that is persistently low student performance, but also a context in which we have declining enrollment, and that creates further constraints on how we organize our schools to make it possible for every child to be successful. So just a little bit of context as we look into this, particularly in the early part of this conversation and as we go through, we're going to be making comparisons between Hartford and other districts. And so just to level set on who those are, when we talk about surrounding suburbs, there's 10 in blue that are highlighted on the left side of the page. And when we talk about other Connecticut urban centers, there's a half a dozen that are highlighted as well. So you'll see throughout the conversation, several references to Connecticut state average, surrounding suburbs average, and Connecticut urban centers average related to Hartford. So the first one of these relates to student need in Hartford. And so the common and most straightforward measures of need that we use in districts around the country are the proportion of kids who receive free or reduced lunch benefits, proportion of kids who qualify as English language learners, and proportion of kids who are denoted as students with disabilities. And as you can see, on each of these dimensions of need, Hartford has a higher proportion of students in the need category relative to surrounding suburbs, relative to other urban centers in Connecticut, and certainly relative to the statewide average. And so we have to acknowledge that as, again, we work towards redefining and building towards models of excellence in the district, we're doing so with an eye towards serving and meeting the needs of students in Hartford, and these are the students that we are serving. The second point we mentioned about context was proficiency. In this case, we're looking at math data, but the pattern holds true for ELA, and I know you're familiar with this, is that, again, looking at any student group, whether we look across all students or within students who receive free reduced lunch benefits, English language learners, students with disabilities, performance levels measured by standardized tests that we have as our measures within Hartford are lower than what we see within each subgroup compared to each of the groups of districts that we were earlier talking about. Ms. Taylor.
I'm sorry. So in terms of format, do we ask questions like as they come up throughout the presentation or do we wait until like a certain point to ask them? Okay. Okay. So in terms of free and reduced lunch, you said it's 78%?
Yes.
But I don't, so not all of our schools actually do the application for free and reduced lunch. Like, how is this percentage determined? Is it based on something other than that application?
Yep. So this is the data from the most recent year in which, I'm looking for the data on here, the most recent year in which the data was collected. Is that right? This is the last year that FRL data was collected. So you're absolutely right. And I think what you're referencing is that in districts around the country, we're having to find a different measure of economic need because the federal move towards not having to capture that data means we're looking at another way of doing it, often through direct certification. So this is the most recent year for which the data is available on free reduced lunch.
And what year is that?
2015, 16.
Maybe I'm not asking the question in the right way. So the school that my children attend, I didn't have to do a free and reduced lunch application, they just automatically got lunch free. But those students are counted within the district as being...
No. Got it. Okay. So I understand your question. So the data here is looking at 2015, 16 data on free and reduced lunch, because that's the last year the district did collect those applications. And in the future, what you're referencing is that because the federal rules have changed about who can receive free or reduced lunch, districts like Hartford are no longer collecting that data. And in the future, we need a different measure of economic need besides free reduced lunch.
We collected data up until, I think it was 2015, which is when we went to that district-wide subsidy, we stopped. We stopped collecting the form.
Yep. Right. So if we were to talk about, have this conversation in a year, we'll be talking more about measures of things like what's called direct certification based on other services that students may be accessing, which is a whole additional challenge, conversations that districts are facing right now. But I think one of the challenges in general is that more than 50% of American kids in public schools now receive free reduced lunch benefits. So it's a pretty blunt measure of need.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. So as the superintendent referenced earlier, obviously, we have very specific dynamics here in Hartford around neighborhood schools and magnet schools. And so if we're going to talk about student need, we feel it's important to address the variation in student need within neighborhood schools and within magnet schools. And so what we're looking at on this particular page is, again, across those three metrics from two years ago, free reduced lunch, English language learner, and student with disabilities, what proportion of kids in neighborhood schools and what proportion of kids in magnet schools as a percentage of their total enrollment fall into each of those categories. And as you can see, our neighborhood schools have a higher level of student need against each of those dimensions compared to magnet schools. So as we think about ensuring that all children in Hartford have an opportunity to thrive and be successful in our schools, we are recognizing that the proportion of kids who have the greatest needs are more present in neighborhood schools. And this is going to be a theme that comes up again and again in thinking about when defining a district model of excellence and defining what those schools look like, attention will need to be paid specifically to neighborhood schools to ensure that the proportion of kids who are there have, are in a, schools that are structured to help set them up for success. The other piece here that I think we know, but feels important to highlight is, in addition to the need measures that we looked at, if we look at the racial or ethnic breakdown of neighborhood and magnet schools, the dynamic is different. And as you can see, the big difference here is the proportion of Latino students in our neighborhood schools is much higher than in magnet schools. And then conversely, the magnet schools for, by design in general, have a higher proportion of white students and Asian students. So the proportion of African-American students in each school is about the same. It's about 30%. So again, thinking about the needs of kids in schools that are likely to be most affected as we design these districts of model, district models of excellence, the proportion of kids in neighborhood schools turns out to, is going to have a big impact on that. One thing we see when we look at individual schools is, you know, averages obviously can mask trends sometimes, and this is one of those cases where that's not true. And so we saw earlier that the proportion of kids in magnet schools who receive free reduced lunch benefits was about 62%, whereas about 87% of kids in neighborhood schools qualified for free reduced lunch benefits. And that is, that is a surprisingly universal split. So as you can see from this chart, almost all of your neighborhood schools are on the high end of the distribution in terms of proportion of kids receiving free reduced lunch benefits in 2015, 16, and almost all magnet schools fall on the low end. And there's obviously a little bit of overlap in the middle. And again, the starkness of that difference is a dominant factor here in how we think about what are the needs of the kids in different schools that we're working with. As we dig into, dig into performance, one thing that is becoming clearer and clearer from academic research around the country is not just the factors related to poverty, but also concentration of poverty. And so what we've started to look at more and more of is, what is the experience and the outcome for a child depending on the level of need in their school relative to the level of need of that child? So what we're looking at here is, all of those green bars are performance of students who do not receive free reduced lunch benefits, and the blue bars are performance of students who do receive free reduced lunch benefits. And what we've done is break those students into three levels of school based on what is the proportion of kids in the school who receive free reduced lunch benefits. So for example, on the left side, we're looking at seven HPS schools where the proportion of kids who receive free reduced lunch benefits is less than 60%. And as you can see, kids who don't receive free reduced lunch benefits in schools that are relatively low need outperform other kids. And there's a big gap between the non-FRL kids, or we'll call them the middle-class kids, and the free reduced lunch benefit-receiving kids. The part of this that is really important for us to understand is the comparison between what does it mean to be a low-income child in a low-need school, right? Versus a student who generally, on the face of it, isn't, doesn't qualify for free reduced lunch benefits, maybe comes from a middle-income family, but goes to a school where the vast majority of children do receive free reduced lunch benefits. So the shorthand is a middle-class student in a, in a very poor school versus a low-income student in a middle-class school. And the thing that's so powerful to understand about concentration of poverty is, a student who comes from a low-income family, as measured by free reduced lunch benefits, in Hartford, if they attend a middle-income school, will outperform a student from a middle-income family in a very high-need school, meaning the concentration of need in your school is a huge impact on the experience and the outcomes for students. So to be specific, students in the average, in Hartford, the average student who comes from a low-income family but attends a school that is not, not as needy at a school-wide level, will outperform a middle-class student in a high-need school by, in this case, 10 points. And again, none of these numbers are particularly high in terms of the proficiency levels we want to see, but this relationship persists across districts around the country. And so again, thinking about concentration of need and obviously, given the context we're operating here, where there's been specific policy around desegregation designed to disperse and balance student need in at least some schools, this again is another really important dynamic for us to think about and to acknowledge as we try to develop models of excellence and structure our schools in ways that give all kids the opportunity to be successful, right? Creating a lot of schools, if we have the opportunity to create schools that are more diverse in terms of the need of their students, the data suggests that all students have the potential to perform at higher levels.
So it sounds to me like what you're saying is, one model of excellence is to have desegregation by race and class, because students that are lower poverty perform better in those types of schools? Is that what you're telling me?
So in this, the data, so technically speaking, the data's about economic need and not looking at race.
They overlap. They overlap with free de-heel though.
Yes, of course they do. Absolutely. Yes. So it's telling us that on average, a student who, yes, right? So a student who is more likely to be black or Latino, more likely to grow, who's growing up in a low-income family, if they're in a desegregated school with a lot of middle-class kids, they're going to outperform kids who maybe come from a middle-class home but are in a school that is incredibly high-need in aggregate.
All right, cool. I just wanted to make sure everyone heard that and we understood that. Cool. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep. Absolutely.
Now, is the cause of that, and I don't know if we can say what the cause is, but is it more because of the concentration of need or is it the resources that are dedicated that we end up dedicating fewer resources to the poorer communities?
Yeah. It's a great question. So I would be really reluctant to go into cause and effect without further, further research on it. I think what we do know is that sometimes the averages tell part of the story and that you're likely to see schools, and we do all over the country, schools with very high need and low or high resources levels objectively, that are having success with kids. And there is a relationship between need and performance, and there is a relationship in many cases between the level of resources and performance. But again, our focus at ERS and our focus here is very much, well, what do you do within the school actually has a tremendous impact on what happens for those students. And so our focus tends to be very much on that within the context in which you're operating. It is sort of the $64,000 question that you asked. Okay. So with that context, we want to focus the rest of our time really on the guiding principles that have evolved through this process. And you all, through multiple workshops, have had an opportunity to weigh in on these and provide input that has shaped these. There have been multiple sessions with families and other stakeholders, principals, teachers around the district that the superintendent and her team have been leading over the last several weeks. And so we're going to structure the rest of our conversation around these four guiding principles. And we think the guiding principles are particularly important because they give us a touchstone. They give us something that says, when we decide what we're shooting for in defining a district model of excellence and schools that are designed in the ways that we think they need to be to give kids, all kids an opportunity to be successful, these are the touchstones. These are the principles we want to come back to again and again. And I would acknowledge that the process that you're embarking upon can be, as it's here and in any other district, politically, personally, economically, socially incredibly challenging. And so the level of alignment that leaders have around these principles becomes really crucial, right? It gives you something to always come back to and say, well, are we making decisions that are aligned with these and getting us closer to realizing the principles that are outlined here? And so the four principles that have been expressed through this process are outlined here. Great teaching and learning in every school, which we'll talk a little bit more about what that means in terms of the conditions you want to create to maximize the opportunity for great teaching and learning in every school. Ensuring safe and equitable access to great schools for all students. Third is ensuring that we have expanded partnerships with families and community organizations. I think the superintendent has talked incredibly clearly about the need to think broadly as a city about how we support our students within and beyond the school walls. And the fourth piece, of course, is the fiscal sustainability of the model and making sure that the trade-offs that we make are the strategic trade-offs that we mean to make that give us the best chance to have a sustainable structure for the foreseeable future. So I'd like to dig in first on the great teaching and learning principle. So what do we mean by this? And this work draws very much on the conversations that we've been a part of and others in the district have had with all of the constituents, but also on research we've done at ERS and work that we've seen around the country about what makes schools successful in communities around the country and particularly in our urban centers across America. And the sub-points here that have been highlighted are, one, we want to ensure that teachers have an opportunity to collaborate, learn, and grow. And that is a really big impact on the size and shape of schools that we create in the district. We'll talk more about that. The second piece is a continuum of personalized instruction and enrichment for each student. And again, that actually has implications for size and shape of schools in terms of how do you create the ability to be flexible with how you organize students and teachers at any given moment during the day. There's some counterintuitive findings that come out of this when we look at how these schools work. The third piece is empowering curriculum, instruction, and assessments, all of which are aligned. This is the third in the list. It's also the center of the list and it's the center of the work. And I don't think that's accidental. That's obviously where all of the works begins. The fourth piece here, culturally responsive teaching that thinks and incorporates a whole student approach. So we want schools that are welcoming and supportive of students in all ways. And the fifth is crucial, which is a strong adult culture and welcoming environment. We know that these things tie together, right? We know from experience that schools that have a strong adult culture grounded in excellent instruction with strong curriculum are also going to be schools that have a greater chance at applying that strong culture to how students are supported. And those are also going to be schools that have a better opportunity for teachers to collaborate well and learn and grow from each other because the adult culture is strong and the focus is on excellent instruction and so on and so on. So these pieces really fit together. And again, to the end point here, the goal is to improve the quality of instruction in all schools.
I see the word "great" showing up all the time here. What is a great school? Because it seems that from this plan, every school in the system will become great. So what's the difference? How will they all be great?
Yep. So I'll take a shot at that and I'll defer to the superintendent as well. I think when we talk about great teaching and learning and having great schools for all kids, what's embedded in that is, are we creating schools where every child has an opportunity to be successful, but we haven't put any structures in place or made any decisions about how we use the resources that we have?
We have different levels of great?
Sorry?
You have different levels of great. If there are different students at different levels. I mean, how do you define that? Because I see great here, great teacher. Then if they're all great teachers, then what's the difference?
I mean, I think what you're getting to is a question about how do you measure student performance and how do you measure teacher impact?
I'm getting to the fact that... I'm getting to the fact that it seems that with this program, there are no failures. Everyone's at the top, if they're all great.
Well, I think that the goal that we've heard expressed here, and it's not unique to Hartford, is that you don't have any schools that are on their face failing their students. That doesn't mean, I think, that every student is always going to be ultimately successful. And obviously, you know, we're dealing with all kinds of challenges with that, but our aspiration is certainly for that to be the case.
If you set the standard low enough, no one will fail. But where are the standards here then, if everyone's great?
So if I understand your question and I think about, so none of this is about lowering standards so that we can claim greatness, right? If you go back to the performance data that we looked at, I think we could make a pretty strong case that that's not where we are right now nor, and that we have work to do. I think, you know, part of the work here is ensuring that all of the decisions that we make and the structures we put in place are grounded in strong rigorous curriculum that raises the bar for all kids and that we have teachers in schools who are grounding their work in that curriculum, who are recognizing the challenges embedded within that, who are continually improving their practice and ensuring that we do things like, and we're getting a little bit granular here, but doing things like ensuring that the child who is farther behind is getting more time with a quality instructor, right? Those are some of the A factor that helps students excel even in a challenging context. And so the question on this that we've been thinking about is how does Hartford Public Schools set up its schools as it goes through this transition period that is upcoming to ensure that that is more likely to be the case in every school?
You're assuming that you're going to get every school like the same, then?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Every school the same?
You're assuming that every, you mentioned one school, but all the schools are going to be raised to that great level, correct? Is that what you're aiming for?
That's the aspiration, yes.
That's the aspiration. Now, what about the reality? I mean, you think that every school in the system will be great, that there are some that just, there are different people or different levels of learning in the school? So how could they all be at the same level that you're talking about?
So our aim is to reduce the variability. Right now, as you know, we have 46, 47 programs and there's significant variability in how our students are performing. And so what we're saying as one of our guiding principles is to have a shared understanding of what is, what does that greatness look like so that we can reduce the fact that there are so many students that are low performing and that there are schools that are low performing. So we're trying to get at that through this process while not ignoring the fact that there will be variability, but we want to aim to continue to reduce that variability.
I could see that. You already want to raise low performing students, but when you concentrate on raising the low performing students, what about the high performing student? What do you do with him?
Well, we certainly don't, we want to sustain and expand those practices as well.
Okay.
I think if I can just quickly add something, it's almost like the college search process for a high school senior, right? I'm going to look at X school because it has an amazing engineering program if I'm somebody focusing on engineering, right? So if this school is going to be great at computer science or engineering, that's probably where I'm going to try to apply, try to get into if I can. But if I'm somebody who's focused more on the arts, I want to be, I want to go into the theater, right? So it's options, right? So a school is going to be better at one thing over another, but we want them to have at least the very basics to be, we want all of our schools to be great in the sense that we're offering, all of our students are being able to basically read at, in the third grade, right? We want our students to be able to do basic math skills, we want them to be able to balance their checkbooks, but at the same time, when they're ready to pick what they want to do as a career, they want to go into the arts, they're going to be able to go to a school that's focusing on the arts. So I think that that's kind of what we're trying to do here as well, right, is get a little bit more focused and I think that's the best way I can equate it is, so, I don't know if that helps you, Mike.
So let's dig in on the great teaching and learning principle a bit. One of the pieces of the work we've been doing over the last several months is talking with and surveying principals about what they see happening in their schools. And we ask the questions about, well, we think about practices around great teaching and learning, how prevalent are these today? And this is just a subset of them that we ask principals about and said, so to what extent do you feel like these practices are in place today, that I have sufficient instructional expertise to support each of my teams of teachers, that I have assessments through the years, so interim assessments that are aligned to our standards, that are common across my classrooms, that I have sufficient teacher time outside the school year to engage in meaningful planning and so on and so on. And as you can see, in each of these cases, a minority, down to 0% of the principals surveyed, said this is what's happening today. And so we think about, again, that guiding principle of what do we want to be true in our schools in terms of having the opportunity for great teaching and learning, this is a bit of our baseline, at least against some of these practices. I've alluded to earlier sort of the size and shape of schools and I want to dig in on that a little bit, yes?
I'm so sorry. So can you tell me where that data came from on the last slide?
Yep, so we surveyed Hartford principals in the spring.
How many?
Oh gosh, we had almost 100% response rate.
Okay, thank you.
So you're saying that these are the items that you think should be in every school? And less than half our principals are saying that we're getting there?
This is a subset of practices, that's right, that you would say, okay, this is, when we look at high performing schools around the country, what's happening there? These are the things that are happening there and our principals are saying, for one reason or another, these things are not currently happening in my school.
They're self-reporting.
The principals are self-reporting.
Self-reporting, correct.
David, can you just quickly unpack the last one with the instructional vision and the 0%?
Yeah, so this is a real challenge for schools all over the country. So we have grand aspirations and visions for what we think great instruction looks like and we play that out at a school level. But particularly in the world we're in right now, right, where standards are rising and getting more rigorous, curriculum is getting more rigorous, when you go into a classroom and say, well, how is instruction happening today and how much does that look like what my vision for great instruction is? And your principals are pretty universally saying, I'm not seeing that on a consistent basis, which is not uncommon as the standards have risen and we have a need to support teachers in improving practice at a really challenging time and in challenging ways. And so this speaks to the need to not only have that strong rigorous curriculum but have the supports in place for teachers and the structures in schools where teachers and principals can support their teachers to continue to improve their practice so that what they do in the classroom does embody the vision of excellence that principals and district leaders are expecting and looking for.
I'm sorry, so 46% of our principals said that they were not sufficient instructional experts?
Yep, sorry, so I think some of this is a shorthand of the question, so I'm glad you're asking the clarifying question. 46% of principals said they felt they had sufficient, a sufficient number and breadth of instructional experts on their staff. So 54% of principals said, I don't think I have enough, I don't think my teachers are truly experts on the curriculum that we are teaching here. And that's important because if I think about how teachers improve practice, particularly with rigorous rising standards, they do it by working together with leadership from someone who really knows the curriculum well. And that's a challenge again in districts around the country right now is raising the bar for all students, we got to raise the bar for all teachers in terms of what they know and understand about how to teach. It's changing a lot with rising standards.
David, you can disaggregate this by magnet and non-magnet?
We could, we did not see any significant gaps in most of the data, we could certainly go back and revisit that.
And to clarify, they're not saying that they don't have the right number of people, they're, we're talking about people's expertise.
So it could be either, right? The way the question is framed, it could be that, I could say, yes, I have, I suspect I would say no to this if I said I had one awesome expert in my fifth grade who really gets fifth grade, but no one else does. And I think I would also answer no to this question if I thought I had, you know, a lot of people who are okay and still figuring it out. So I think you probably have to go principal by principal. To the Superintendent's question, by the way, I would also say when we disaggregate this, you do get into pretty small N sizes, so the question of what's a meaningful difference also gets a little bit, a little bit rough.
It's fair, yeah.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure, sure.
So this is really interesting, I appreciate it. Just wanted to point out, I don't know if this came up in your study, that the Hartford Public Schools did not have a teaching and learning committee for at least the last 10 years, although state law requires us to have one. The prevailing idea of the school district that was that every school would be like a choice school and everyone's, every school would have their own model and that like, you know, like capitalism would lift all boats or something like that, some crazy theory like that. And that didn't quite work out, right? And so it's only been in the past few years that the district has paid more attention to curriculum, to common assessments, to, you know, practicing and understanding instruction based on common curriculum, common standards and that sort of thing. So I'm not surprised to see this on the principal level. I guess my point would be that, you know, we as a board have continued work to make sure that, you know, everybody in the district understands what the curriculum looks like, everyone looks, knows what, you know, good quality instruction looks like. So I think this is really helpful because we're trying to like bridge the gap between the fact that the district wasn't working on this stuff, or at least to my knowledge, wasn't working on this stuff until the very last couple of years. So this is very helpful and insightful and I'd be happy to like look a little bit more at what you guys had for that.
And to your point, Robert, about the curriculum and instruction committee, it was recently formed in the last few months.
Right, oh yeah, so shout out to the-
As a necessary structure.
Shout out to the Superintendent, shout out to the chairman. No, I mean, it's like, you know, through the leadership of the Superintendent and the chairman and other folks, we established a teaching and learning committee over the last year and we're getting that off the ground and paying attention to these sorts of things that we haven't paid attention to. So, you know, it was a need and, you know, we're working on it. I guess I'm just acknowledging the fact that you guys noticed something that I think is, something that's been missing in our school district is attention to this sort of thing because that's the stuff we're supposed to be doing, right? Like as a school district, so thank you, yeah.
Thank you. This does lead into a conversation about sort of what does a school need to look like in order to enable these practices, right? So you need many things in place, right? You need the talent, you need the knowledge, you need the structures in place and so-
I have one more thing-
Oh yeah, sorry.
I'm so glad we came back to it. So, I mean, I really am shocked about the, like, 0% of folks saying that instructional vision is connected to classroom practice because that is the anchor, like, to everything that we're doing, right? And we're talking about like strong adult culture and culturally responsive teaching, like if there's a complete disconnect between like vision and practice, like, we can just throw all this paper in the garbage. So I'm just wondering if maybe just the summary of the question, it makes it seem like such a shocking report, can we see the actual questions that were, can we have the actual questions that were asked to principals because this is just like 0% self-reporting?
Absolutely.
That's shocking.
Yeah, I think we can certainly pull that for you and you can see the exact answers. And I think when we think about the opportunities principals have had to weigh in on this and continue to provide input and as you have conversations with principals, it's certainly something to probe further on what it means for them and what it looks like, but we'll certainly share the exact framing of the question and the response.
So I just want to add, I'm sorry, just had to pontificate a little bit. We did this as a board, we decided on a teaching and learning committee and as a board, we're deciding that we can no longer function with those bad practices. So I just want to acknowledge that it's not just one person or two people, it's all of us working in one direction because we speak as one. And one question I would ask is, to Ms. Taylor's point, instructional vision connected to classroom practice, we have a zero there. Is that, is that in large, is that in part because we didn't have a, an actual district wide vision and key performing metrics? Metrics like when I, my mother was on the board and they used to have, was it KPIs or CIs? Something, some kind of metric that-
SPI.
SPI, that's what it was.
Who Performance Index?
Yeah, it was SPI. So is this in direct relation to the fact that we stopped having that kind of performance matrix?
So I would actually defer back to folks like you all who have a much greater sense of the history of the district to draw the connections in cause and effect.
Can I respond to that real quick?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the exact opposite. I think what was happening was that we'd actually meet, there was actually a meeting in this room, right? Let me give you a story, real quick. There's a meeting in this room and we literally paraded six principals in front of the whole board and said, you guys have not met your school performance index and literally shamed them, right? And said, you didn't meet your metrics, right? And I thought to myself, like, how is this going to improve the school, right? Like, how is like parading principals and like, you know, bringing these schools in front of the whole board and making a mockery of them, how is that improving the school? And what does that say about improving instruction, right? Because the only message you're sending is you're saying, you guys didn't get the index number that I want you to get. You didn't send a message that said, we want you guys to have quality instruction in your school and actually have a curriculum and actually teach kids well, right? And so I think that's the missing piece that's happened. It's not about what, like, how you judge the school in terms of like a metric, that was actually the wrong way of doing it. What we were, what we should have been doing is saying, we need to pay close attention to the fact that not every school has a curriculum, right? Not every school has some sort of common idea of what instruction looked like. Instead, what good instruction looked like was getting a good number, not actually doing good instruction, right? And a lot of bad things happened as a result of that. And so we got wacky ideas about what good instruction looked like. So you'd hear a principal saying, well, we're an expeditionary learning school. Well, what the hell does that mean, right? Like, what does that actually mean about instruction? Expeditionary learning? That is not like, I mean, it might be like a philosophy, like Montessori or something like that, but you got people saying stuff that didn't quite make sense, right? We're a capital prep school, we're about social justice. Okay, well, what does that mean about instruction? What do you actually, how do you actually teach kids and how is that a vision? And so when you look 10 years later and you see that no one can actually talk about what it looks like to make a good lesson and to have kids come out understanding what they know, it's because we spent time on the wrong things. We're talking about numbers and indexes and like gimmicks and themes and stuff like that, rather than saying like, can you really make a lesson? Can you really identify what your kids learned from that? Can you look at it as a school and see what your kids are doing well and what you're not doing well? We were not doing that. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out and not like, you know, get them a high horse or whatever, but it's like, that's what we are spending our time on and not actually talking about these other things. And so, you know, you look to yourself and you're saying, we just now have like a common curriculum in math and reading for all grades in the whole district. And you're like, how, like, how have schools even been able to operate with that, without that, right? Like, how have schools, like, how have they been able to like manage with the fact that the district, us, central office, school board, has not said, here is a plan of what your kids ought to learn and here are the standards that we want you to learn and here are some materials to meet those standards? That's absurd. No other school district ignores that stuff and we ignored it for at least a decade, right? Because we wanted to make choice and themes and, you know, school govern, all this other stuff, right? But we didn't want to focus on that. So anyway, that's how we got here. So to answer your question, like, you wanted to defer to me, that's my answer to you is like how we got here. And I'd be happy to talk to you more about it if you'd like.
Thank you. I'd be happy to hear more too. And you can stay on your high horse because I like it.
Thanks.
So yeah, that's a great answer to my question and hopefully we will, not even hopefully, we will not repeat that and by all means, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, thank you for the questions and the history.
One thing that I feel strongly about is that in order to keep visions alive, now we have teachers and principals and so forth every year set up goals. And I think one thing that we have failed to do is that when you set up goals, you have to understand and be able to explain how your goals support the vision so that everyone is always moving towards that. And maybe that's now my bias because of my corporate world, that's how it worked and we actually got paid based on that.
And we got to monitor that, so yeah, you're right.
So I think one of the themes that you're identifying is just the many pieces that have to be in place, right? Strong curriculum, empowering curriculum, clear standards, how you measure, how you support principals. One of the pieces that we think is particularly relevant in the models of excellence work is thinking about, again, we talked about the size and- is thinking about, again, we talked about the size and shape of schools, and wanted to choose a particular school example from, that is a composite of what schools are like here in Hartford, to demonstrate some of the factors that we think will need to evolve for the district's model of excellence to real, to, to help set up for great teaching and learning. And so, the example school here is a, is a kindergarten through eighth grade school. And this is literally taken and, and averaged across a, a whole slew of Hartford schools. So this is a representative model, and this, this representative school is 470 students, just over 20% are qualified as students with disabilities. That's higher than the district average, because you're going to have a higher proportion of kids in the elementary, higher elementary, middle grades. And so the general education enrollment is, is 370. As we, as we'll talk about when we get into fiscal sustainability, this is not on the face of it a small school, right? 470 kids, with the 20% special rate, is not a school that in most districts would start to see a high per pupil cost, just because of its size. But when you dig in further, particularly in this case, because it's a K8, although the patterns exist in your, in your elementary schools and middle schools as well, you start looking at, well, what happens within each grade? And so in this school, you have in the elementary grades, somewhere in the 40s, something, 41 to 48 kids per grade, and in the middle grades, because you have transitions after fifth grade, you have more like 35 kids per grade, or even less. And so what does that start to look like? If, well, in a traditionally organized school, right, where you have one teacher per classroom, you start thinking about, well, how does that work? Well, in those early elementary grades, I may be able to invest in having three separate classrooms with fewer than 17 kids, which research would tell us is actually, really, potentially requires strategic practice, if you have the right teacher in the room. But as you get into the higher grades, you start seeing, well, I have two strands, as we would call it, 22, 23, 21 kids per grade, and in the middle school, even lower. And so on the surface, you say, well, good, you know, these are relatively small class sizes, particularly in the middle grades and the early elementary grades, when we know we want to have extra attention for kids, isn't that setting us up well? And it turns out that there's pros and cons to this, but because the situation is so prevalent in Hartford, it sort of precludes you from addressing some of the critical needs that need to be addressed for you to get to great teaching and learning, and, and let's call that out specifically. So if you take those classrooms and start to align teachers against them, and again, this is a traditional structure, right? One teacher per classroom, certain number of kids, and then in the seventh and eighth grade, you start seeing departmentalization. Well, what does that start to look like with those two strands per grade? Well, you create a whole slew of challenges here, and we'll, we'll call out a few of them. These are small grade sizes, right? So one big challenge is that, there's a limited opportunity for meaningful collaboration among teachers, especially in a district where you have a lot of turnover, and in the schools, where you're going to have the most turnover, which is where the kids have the highest needs. Having two teachers in a grade means that chances are, one of those teachers has only been there for a year or two, and the other one may not be much more experienced either. So back to your question about, do I have sufficient instructional expertise? How I can get sufficient instructional expertise at any given grade level is going to be a real challenge here. And so when I sit these two teachers down and say, "Well, how are you going to use your collaborative planning time together?" Who is the leader in that? Who brings the expertise? A second piece is the flexibility around small group sizes. It's nice to have a class of 22 or 24 kids, but if I want to get a group of five or six kids, and I only have two teachers, that other teacher has 40 kids on their hands at the same time. And schools don't, aren't organized to do that. So you actually need more scale at a grade level to create that, that flexibility. We see with middle school, you know, if you have one math teacher across your seventh and eighth grades, they're going to have to teach seventh grade math and eighth grade math twice each, and probably do something in the, in the younger grades as well, to be able to be fully, to be working basically through the day. That's a harder job, and they're doing it on their own, there's no one else teaching the same content in the school. And then what we know is that enrollment, it varies from year to year. And so if you're only dealing with one or two or three strands at any given grade level, a shift of five or 10 kids suddenly means, actually, the last year's third grade teacher is going to be next year's fifth grade teacher, which makes it hard for teachers to become great at their practices, when you want to ground that practice in instruction. So this is a model of school that on the surface, we say, "Okay, well, it's almost 500 kids, it's a K8, we like the K8 model," but it brings up all of these other challenges. And again, this is all about trade-offs, right? We always say, "You can do anything, but you can't do everything," and this model creates particular challenges in areas that if Hartford Public Schools can get these things right, we think has the potential to replicate what we see happening in really high-performing schools at urban centers around the country. So let's now pull back and look at all schools in the district, and say, "Well, what are our grade sizes like?" And the answer is, generally speaking, small, right? So the minimum viability you need in an elementary school is probably about two strands, and you still have a lot of the challenges that we just identified. Ideally, you'd like to be able to get to three strands. So again, unless you're going to start doing things like have inter-age classrooms, or do competency-based learning, or other structures that are outside the box in pretty significant ways, which would be great, by the way, but are, are more challenging even for, for teachers to adjust to, and to succeed with, you have very few, almost no schools that are operating with the ability to have three strands across their grade levels, right? 75 kids per grade. So the opportunities for the collaboration, the flexibility, just don't exist today. And in, in secondary schools, where you need a higher minimum, because you have departmentalization happening, it's also exceedingly rare. So as we think about where we're going, right? We talk about, okay, are our schools too small, are our schools expensive, are we in the right facilities, are we highly utilized? And that leads to conversations about consolidation. The real question is, what are we building towards? And what we want to build towards are schools that have enough scale in, in, in each grade level, and then consciously build in structures to support practices around high-quality instruction, and, and that surround high-quality instruction.
Now, when you talked about scale and strand, is that the same thing, or is that like an industry term that-
So a strand, yeah. So, so strand, a strand here specifically is like, one of these columns, right? So like, the fourth grade here has two strands, there's two, two classrooms, right? So the, the, you know, if I assume, we use the number 75 as a rule of thumb, if I assume I want to have at least three teachers teaching at the same grade level, unless I'm going to do some interesting grouping, or, or inter-age classrooms or things, I'm talking about three strands of about 25 kids each. For scale is really just the size of the school, or the size of the grade level. So, if you get to enough strands, or enough kids at a grade level, we would say you have scale to be able to do things flexibly. Because now if I want to pull out 10 kids into a small group, but I have three teachers across 75 kids, the other two teachers have to manage 65 kids, well, it's a class of 32. You know, that's not actually crazy, if those kids are, are, you know, have a strong curriculum and a strong teacher in front of the room, for a period of time, to enable personalized instruction for the small group. So you, you get that ability for flex, you get the flexibility in place.
And so with that, how does teacher collaboration work?
Yeah.
In that kind of a limited strand?
Right, so if there's only two teachers teaching fourth grade, and I'm one of them, and this is my second year in the school, and you're the other, and it's your fifth year in the school, maybe your fifth year in your district, and your second year in this particular school, and we're given, we're, if the teacher's able to build, if the principal's able to build a schedule where we have meaningful collaborative time, who's leading that? Who's the true instructional, like, is there a coach in the school who understands fourth grade curriculum well, right? And how are we, how, how are we splitting the work of, of lesson plan, tailoring, and development, or data review, when there's only two of us? It gets, it gets more challenging. There are some teachers who will absolutely excel in this model, because they have, they build the expertise, they have the experience, they've been at it, or they just, you know, they're, they're the ones, the superheroes that we see and talk about. On average, this is a really challenging structure for, for most contexts in which we work.
Could you define that, small grade sizes? Are you saying that small grade sizes are not what you're looking for, or do you want small grade sizes?
Yeah, so we're saying that small grade sizes are, make it difficult to, to practice many of the, to, to, to implement many of the practices that are, that we see in high-performing schools.
So that the larger the class, the easier, or the more beneficial?
No, definitely not about the class size at all, it's very much about the ability-
What are we talking about? School size, or grade size?
Yeah, so we're talking about the, the, the number of students in the grade, which has a direct impact on the number of teachers in the grade.
Does that affect the number of students in a classroom?
It will affect the number of students in the classroom, although because we have staffing ratios and, and targets that we have in place in most districts, you're not talking about radical shifts in class sizes, right? At some point, you get a certain number of more kids, and you add a teacher to maintain a certain class size. So really, the question is less about, is the class size 18, or 20, or 22, or 24, and more about, to the chairman's question, how do two teachers support each other and work together to improve practice, versus a group of three teachers, where maybe one of them has more experience? Or, how do I create small group instruction when I have 45 kids and two teachers, versus 100 kids and four teachers? Right? You just have a lot more flexibility to tailor the experience based on the kids' needs, and to support teachers in their professional learning, when you have a little bit more scale.
The number, I, I don't follow that clearly, the, you're talking about small sizes, correct? Of, let's say, the eighth grade. Now, are we talking also about small class size? For instance, is it better to have 12 students in a class, or is it better to have 20 students in a class? Is that what you're driving at?
So that, that's not what I'm driving at, but it's a good point. The, the research would tell us that if you get to a very small class size in certain grades, and the best research is on early elementary, right, where you get to below, say, 17 kids or less, with a highly skilled teacher, you have the ability to generate much higher student outcomes, much more student learning, than the typical class of 22 or 25 kids. But you have to get down to that very small level, and again, that's a decision that you make and say, if that's an investment that we are going to make, do we believe that we have everything else in place to get that, the outcomes that we want? And that's an absolute strategy that many schools and systems pursue.
This seems the opposite of when they had, when they were offering advanced placement classes, there were only about six or seven in a class, and they thought that was optimal.
Well, so it's-
That's just the opposite of what it seems to be indicating here.
Yeah, well, this is a little bit of a sidebar from, from the conversation, but I think it's a really good point. So, for the students in that AP class, and for the teacher teaching that AP class, that's wonderful. But in a high school where that's happening, based on work we've done in other districts, and we haven't yet done this analysis here in Hartford, but it wouldn't surprise me, when you look at both the combination of the, imagine that, the, the ninth grade English class in that same high school.
Yeah.
Right? So it's not uncommon to see maybe six kids in your AP English class with a very experienced teacher, and a 28 or 30 kids in your basic entry ninth grade English class, many of those kids will not be ready to read at a ninth grade level, yet taught by a novice teacher. And so, from a, from a resource use standpoint, and a strategic standpoint, we would call that a sort of a, a non-strategic and inequitable use of resources. So while that works really nicely for the kids in the AP class, it's entirely possible, it comes with a trade-off, and that trade-off often can have a detrimental impact on, on many other kids. Depends on the school, you'd have to look at each individual case.
What you're really addressing is how, the number of teachers that you need to support each other, to work together well.
Correct. Correct. Okay. So we're going to shift into the, the second principle here, which is about-
Is there a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Please.
So we were talking about teachers, but we also have coaches in our models and HBS. Could you speak to that at all? And, and I don't, I just feel like, we're saying that collaboration and learning from each other, but we do have existing, a significant number of coaches, I believe, in across our schools. So how does that play into what you just shared with us?
Yeah, so I could speak generally about that, because I don't think we've, we've yet gotten to a level of analysis about the practices of coaching here in Hartford. So, there are cases where your instructional coach is enough of an instructional expert, and is able to use her time in such a way where she is leading collaboration and professional development among teachers, is observing classrooms in a supportive coaching manner, in a non-evaluative way, and then providing feedback to those teachers outside of the classroom, to say, "Well, here's how that, that class went." And that feedback is not just grounded in general pedagogy, or how you run your classroom, but actually, "How did you teach Romeo and Juliet, based on the lessons that we've defined and the kids that we know are behind?" Like, so, in schools that are, that are seeing great success with their kids, those are the practices that are happening. In a world where you have a coach that, where the time is not structured that way, and/or, particularly in a school like a K8, where the curriculum needs and the expertise are so broad, that it's really difficult to assume any one person is going to be able to really push in in all of those cases and support all of those teachers, you end up making some trade-offs in how that time is used. So, this is less a statement about is coach, are coaches good or bad, and are they effective or ineffective? It's more saying, the ask of a coach in a school that is structured this way is also incredibly large, and makes it difficult to, to achieve what you want to achieve.
Thank you.
Uh, one quick question, I promise. So for secondary schools, do you have a strategic number attached to it, like you do for elementary schools?
Yeah, it's a great question, we were just talking about it as a team earlier. The answer is, it really varies, there's so many more variables in a secondary school because of departmentalization-
No, that's a good one.
-and all that, so, so yeah, I think it, it, it depends. Which is an unsatisfying answer, I'll acknowledge.
But, but I was expecting that, so.
Appreciate that. Okay. So let's talk about access to great schools. And so we're gonna, we're gonna frame this around some maps of the district, along a few metrics we're gonna look at, and then bring that data together to say, what does we think this, what do we think this implies about the areas of the city that may need to be a deeper area of focus, to ensure safe and equitable access for all students? So the first map we're looking at here is looking at, again, we're just looking at elementary, middle schools, schools here, you can see the red schools are neighborhood schools, the blue schools are magnet schools. And the size of the circle is the amount of, of growth in ELA that students experienced in the 15, 16 school year. As you can see, the state average is about the size of the second largest circle there, the .64, and the Hartford average is, is .56, is sort of the middle circle. So this is, you can get a sense of, of, of how this looks, and I would call out a couple of things here. One is that, across most of the performance metrics we've been able to look at, and ELA growth in these schools is one of them, you see large circles in neighborhood schools, and small circles in neighborhood schools, you see large circles in magnet schools, and small circles in magnet schools. So there's widely varying performance across the schools. The second thing that I would call out, and we've done it with the circles here, is there are certain pockets of the city where there are no schools that are seeing significant growth, certainly above-average growth, among their students. And so what that means is you have these large swaths of the city, where if I live there, I'm a family there, and I look around at the schools around me, what I'm seeing are schools that people might describe as, as failing, or not, not, certainly not being a place where my kid is, is likely to be successful, because I don't see other kids being successful there. So when we start talking about access, we start talking about, well, where are the places where we maybe don't have it figured out yet, relative to other places? This is one way to look at that, is where's, where's growth happening? And we're going to apply this logic to a couple of other metrics, yes?
Is that what the, like, the red circle, the large red line is? What is that?
Yes, that's, that's calling attention to the fact that there are schools that are generating very low growth.
If you draw it within that.
Concentrated within there. Yeah, it's very rough, obviously, but it just, it gives you a sense.
I have a request, for myself and for others who may be watching at home or here in the audience, whenever there is an acronym, can you just like, say it all out?
Yes, I apologize. Thank you for asking. ELA is English Language Arts. So our second map here is looking at, again, the same schools, elementary and middle schools. And in this case, what we're looking at is both the size of the school and the utilization of the school. So the size is the actual enrollment. The bigger circles are schools with more students. And the darker the circle is, the closer that school is to having enrollment that is And the darker the circle is, the closer that school is to having enrollment that is close to its capacity of the school. So, again, what we see here is that in the northern half of the city, we have a preponderance of schools that are relatively small in terms of low enrollment and that are relatively light in color here, which means that they're low utilization. So this goes to a point the superintendent made at the very beginning of this, which is, we have schools that are objectively small in terms of enrollment and have a lot of empty seats. And a world, as we'll see in a little while, that where enrollment overall has been declining, particularly in our neighborhood schools, we have an opportunity to rethink how we educate students in those schools and free up resources to be able to build the models of excellence with the potential for great teaching and learning that we aspire to. And this is where those schools, right now, are concentrated. There's a third map we want to bring into this, which isn't district data, it's census data. And this is just looking at the concentration of, really just the population of school-age children in Hartford. Right? So it might actually be okay to see just a part of the city where you have few schools, small schools, because there just aren't students there, and, and you have a neighborhood model for many of your students. So, for, for reference here, this shows us the darker the neighborhood, the more students there are, as we see it. And so you can see, you know, greater concentration to the north, greater concentration to the And so we can start to bring these and other data points together, and this is deliberately marked preliminary, because this is, this is part of the core of the work that happens over the next several weeks, is figuring out, well, if we want to create safe and equitable access to great schools for all students, and we want to design those schools in ways that have the potential for great teaching and learning, where do we focus our efforts? And so, what we've done here is list out each neighborhood in the city. We've ranked them by that metric we saw in the last chart, last map, number of school-age kids. And basically said, well, do we have schools where, with, do we have schools, neighborhood or magnet schools, that are generating above-average growth? Again, using English Language Arts as our metric. Do we have students in the schools in these neighborhoods that receive free reduced lunch benefits? So it's a measure of economic need. Do we have schools that are, that are well-utilized? And then just for reference, we have the facility quality rank. And again, that's not the driver of decisions here, but it's a, it's a piece of context that we use. And so, the preliminary boxes here are around, around the neighborhoods, and we've used the heat map for this purpose, where you see a lot more red and orange, right? Where you see that, well, we are less likely, we don't see schools that are generating above-average performance in English. We don't, we do see higher-need students, we do see lower utilization, we do see maybe facilities that are, that are on average, lower, lower quality based on the evaluation that's been done. And so it gives us some focus to be able to say, if we're going to be reconstituting schools, where should we be doing that? And to, to meet the needs of which students. And obviously, there's more that goes into this work, but this is just a bit of context that we can provide right now about what, what safe and equitable access focus really would need to, to start looking at.
What, what does ES mean?
Elementary school.
Elementary school.
Yeah.
And that is the current, you're taking that as the K-8 model? Or you're just looking at elementary grade?
In this case, I believe we just looked at elementary. Is that right? We didn't look at middle grades for this metric?
It's, I mean, because we have, like, mostly K-8 schools, so I didn't know if that was by our schools or by grade.
Yeah, right.
Elementary grade.
It's all elementary grades.
Grades.
Yes. So even if the school's a K-8 school, we're just looking at-
Looking at those grades.
Yes, and which is really going to be grades three through five, tested grades. There's one other piece of this that we think is important to highlight, which is the question about, so which kinds of, which schools are we talking about? Right? We've been talking largely about neighborhoods and the schools within those neighborhoods. And there's a really important piece here around, well, we have neighborhood schools and we have magnet schools. And so the data we're looking at here is from the school choice system, just about, again, looking across each of these, the number of people who participate in the lottery, the number of acceptances to magnet schools, and then the number of enrollees. And what you see on the left are Hartford residents, and what you see on the right are suburban residents. And the big difference that you see here is in the proportion of applicants or people participating in the lottery who are offered a seat in a magnet school. And if I, if I live in Hartford, the likelihood, and it's almost the exact same number of people who applied for seats. If I live in Hartford, the likelihood that I will get accepted to a magnet school is a lot lower than if I live in the suburbs. Now, I want to acknowledge that there are a lot of policy and practice factors that create the situation, many of which are beyond the scope of some of the questions that we are looking at. What I choose to look at with this is, what does this look like from the perspective of a Hartford family? And what it looks like from the perspective of a Hartford family is, if I have less, if I believe that one of the magnet schools is a great opportunity for my child, and I have less of a chance of being there, and you are talking to me about providing safe and equitable access to great schools, then what we do with our neighborhood schools will have a disproportionate impact on what I can do for my child. And so the takeaway from this, this set of analysis is, we want to think over the next several weeks about not only which neighborhoods, but how within those neighborhoods we structure neighborhood, design and structure neighborhood schools in particular, in ways that create more opportunities, more potential for kids in those neighborhoods to get an excellent education, thinking about, we talked about earlier, about what, what the conditions for great teaching and learning fully look like. Third principle here around family and community partnerships. And again, this is something I think the superintendent has been, has been really emphatic about and very, being super important. We want to acknowledge that one of the district priorities that's been established is around the role of families in helping create and support excellent schools. And so there's much more embedded within this, but this is, this is a district priority. What we also want to acknowledge is that Hartford is a city where there are many community organizations serving a youth population. So what you're looking at here on this map is, the, the blue dots are, are schools. In this case, we've sized them based on the student need, which is just a composite of the free reduced lunch, English language learner, student with disability metrics. And then all the small black dots you see are youth and family-focused community partners. Now, these may, these organizations may or may not be currently partnered with Hartford Public Schools or with the city or anybody else, but they are in the city's database. They're on the website. They exist around the city. Most principals we surveyed said, yeah, we work with a community partner. So that's a, that's a good starting place. And what we want to acknowledge here is that a guiding principle in designing these new, new or reconstituted schools is going to be, are we fully leveraging the community resources that are available to us? And that can be done in any number of ways, but the big focus here is on what we've heard talked about as learning-focused partnerships. And so when we look around the country at districts that are working hard to create strong community partnerships that support instruction in their schools, there's a bunch of conditions that they start to put in place, some of which is just about vetting organizations and ensuring that they're clear about what it is we want to accomplish by bringing partners in. But also just thinking about, are we including, how deeply are we embedding our community partners in the work we're doing around teaching and learning? Right? I could have a community partner that provides a basketball program for my kids after school, which is great. I could also have a community partner who's coming in to help provide physical education instruction during the school day that gives me the ability, potentially, to create more available time for my core teachers to be doing other development work together. Right? I could have a community partner where I have a, a science-oriented field trips, and/or I could have that community partner help support and deliver science curriculum during or after the school day in ways that actually give me the opportunity to target other instruction to kids who need more help in reading. I'm just, I'm, we're talking through different examples here, but you can imagine how this plays out. And so, being strategic and deliberate about those decisions in, in designing schools in the models of excellence that will exist in the future becomes one of the guiding principles here that we want to ensure come into play.
David, how many youth-based organizations? I mean, I see the dots all over. I just wondered if you had a-
Oh, gosh, I didn't do it count. Do you recall offhand? Yeah. We'll get the exact number for you.
I know there are a lot, but I-
Yeah, it's a few dozen. We'll get the exact number for you.
So, as you probably know, we have the community schools model at several of our schools across the city. I'm interested in understanding how that has been brought into your analysis, because what you just talked about in these principles, these are the principles of that model. So, could you speak a little bit to that?
Yeah. So, I think what that means is that in, to the extent that those models exist in neighborhoods and communities and in schools where some of the other challenging factors exist and that we're going to need to be addressed in building towards these new models of excellence, then that becomes something, a touchstone to be able to pull forward and say, well, we need to maintain that or build on that strength. To the extent that that doesn't exist in some of the places that we're looking, the district will be looking to build towards these models of excellence, and we say, well, what are the, what are the examples within the district that we can look at, which may be some of the ones you described, and say, well, how do we do more of that here? And I suspect that's why most of your principals say that they are working with community partners in some way. So, generally speaking, those are probably good shoulders to be standing on to move forward in the future.
So, it sounds like more about gap analysis versus a, I'm looking for, like, the effectiveness scale, the performance scale and best practice kind of piece, but it sounds like the first step, admittedly, this probably, we need to take steps, is to take a look at where things are happening and where they're not. And I, and I'm just wanting to acknowledge that because there's a different funding model that goes along with those schools. There are certain commitments that are happening at both the SGC level, as well especially the principal level at those schools. So it's definitely not an apples-to-apples comparison. And I just, you know, some good data has come out of that work that's coming out of the community schools, and I think it's just important for that to be a key piece of this work, and, and at least in terms of the analysis.
The last guiding principle that we want to highlight is fiscal sustainability. And we want to build a network of schools, and HPS wants to have a network of schools that is for the long term and that is sustainable in the long term. Part of that is looking at enrollment and enrollment trends. And so what you're looking at here is, is HPS enrollment over the last four years. What you can see is that the decline in enrollment has happened exclusively, in aggregate at least, at neighborhood schools. So over the last four years, neighborhood school enrollment has declined by 15%, while magnet school enrollment has remained flat. And so this is, again, part of the contributing factors to some of the things that superintendent was describing at the beginning of this conversation. What this has meant is that we, absent changes in the school portfolio, we have smaller school sizes. So over the last five years, what you can see is the average size of a school in Hartford has declined from 434 students to fewer than 400 students. And I will acknowledge that in almost all districts where we work, once you see schools get below about 350 at the elementary school level or K-8 level, that's when the cost per pupil really starts to rise, and you have, you have fundamental inequities start to get baked into the system. And so, our average school size is down there, and you have many schools that are at that level already. Just for reference, we can compare this to what is true in our, in our fellow urban centers in, in the state. And we, we started several years ago with a smaller average school size, and it has declined. So this, again, is a big driver of what ultimately will become a driver of cost in the district. And again, this is very much about, well, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. So if we choose to maintain an investment in relatively small schools, then we are choosing not to do other things that we could be doing for our kids, some of which we've been describing here earlier. And so, thinking about how do you create a network of schools that is fiscally sustainable with a size of school that is supportable by your financials, becomes really important in defining these models of excellence. So, to, to get really specific about this in terms of the dollars that are involved, we can look at school size and school utilization. So then proportion of seats that are filled within each school. We're going to put all of your elementary and K-8 schools into one of four buckets. And the first one is, is an easy one, is where are small elementary or K-8 schools, below 350, that are really highly utilized, right? Well, they're designed to be small, and they're small. And the answer is, there aren't any like that in the district. There are ten schools that are over 350 kids and highly utilized. And unsurprisingly, those are your, your lowest cost on a per-pupil basis schools. The school, the school-level dollars are about $10,000 per pupil. The eleven schools that are designed to be big but are not highly utilized, right? Lots of empty seats, on a per-pupil basis are more expensive. And the most expensive schools are those that are designed to be small and are underutilized, right? So this school was designed to have 320 kids, it now has 200 kids in it. And it costs about $11,500 to educate kids in those schools. Now, if we believe, right, if our theory of action is that we want small schools and we're okay with empty seats, because we think that that enables us to do things that are right for kids, then that may be a strategic investment at $11,500. That's generally not the case. And so, as a thought exercise, what we've done here is calculated and said, well, what if we didn't have that situation? What if all of our kids were educated in schools that operated where they at least were designed to be at 350, let alone with, before you even get to, you know, or even get to the level of 350 and, and highly utilized? And the answer is, that's a three to four million dollar annual investment just in school operating costs. We're not getting into capital expense, we're not getting into other fixed, any other fixed costs. Like, this is just the cost of, of, of running instruction in those schools. And so, again, in the world of, we can do anything, but we can't do everything, this is a decision that is implicit, that has been made in the district, and that as we think about reconstituting schools and reconfiguring the network, how do we do it in a way that frees up those dollars so we can repurpose them towards things that are going to have a more direct impact on student learning in a context where we know that's the thing that we need to focus the most on? So we want to take a few minutes as, as we wrap this up and just bring this together with some implications from the work of the comprehensive study. And the first one we want to talk about is something we've alluded to already, which is, where should the work focus? And there's a lot of dynamics in this that you all, as, as representatives of your communities, will be deeply familiar with. And so, again, in no way do we want to assert an answer here. What we do want to acknowledge is, what we saw earlier is that there are several communities in the city where, along multiple metrics, we are not currently set up to realize the goals outlined in those guiding principles. And they're highlighted here. In these six communities, and we chose these six for, as illustration, but also a good direction on what, what you could be doing, half of the kids in Hartford who are of school-age live in these communities. But only 30% of the seats that are in high-performing neighborhood schools are in these communities.
High-performing neighborhood schools?
Yes.
Say that again.
Yep.
Start over, David.
Yep. So, so in the six, in the six communities that are highlighted here, half of Hartford's school-age kids live in those communities. But only 30% of the seats in neighborhood schools that are, that are generating relatively high performance levels are in these communities.
You're talking about growth or, you're using the growth model?
Correct. Yes. Above-average growth. Only 30%. So if you look at neighborhood schools that are generating above-average growth in English, only 30% of this, of the available seats in those schools, of total seats in those schools are in the communities that are highlighted here. So lots of ki, you know, a higher proportion of kids than seats in high-performing, high-growth schools. And specifically thinking about neighborhood schools here. What's also relevant here is the proportion of kids who qualified for free reduced lunch benefits. You'll recall that the average in the district was 78%. In these communities, it's 84%, which means in the rest of the city, it's in the low, low 70s. And that's, you know, all of those are high numbers, but these communities represent a higher-need group of students that have less, with, with fewer high, fewer high-performing neighborhood schools in their communities. So, and you'll recall, these are also where small schools are, where low-utilized schools are. Like, these are communities where, if we're going to create models of excellence that address the needs of all of our children, neighborhood schools in these communities become pretty, pretty crucial to that effort.
Forgive me, I laughed and I came back. Can you just quickly just make that plain? Like, just convince that again?
Yep.
So... Yeah, just, yeah, I'm letting-
Try it again. Yep. So, in the six communities in the northern part of the city that we've highlighted here, there are more school-age kids, there, well, no, sorry, let me try this again. Half the school-age kids in Hartford live in these communities. But only 30% of these, of the seats in high-growth schools are in these communities, and specifically high-growth neighborhood schools. And the proportion of kids in these communities in Hartford schools who receive free reduced lunch benefits is higher than in other parts of the city. So you have more needy kids, fewer schools with high English, above-average growth in English among neighborhood schools.
Is there, we have data around the choice participation rate in those neighborhoods that could be overlaid on that?
Yeah.
Because I, I feel like at one point I saw, like, I think it was broken down by zone, but like, the percent participat- but like, the percent participation in choice.
I think we have it by zone, but not by neighborhood in this way.
No, no, actually, like, getting in, yeah.
We have, I believe we have school choice data by zone, so the quadrants of the city, but not by the exact neighborhood. So it's a pretty close overlay to your two northern zones, but it's not going to be, not precise.
I would be curious to see that data point overlaid on some of it.
Yes, sure. Mr. Carter.
I guess, I mean, I'm still trying to parse out, like, what aspect of this analysis is really, like, we've clustered the poorest students in altogether, basically, right, in the same schools, from choice or housing or whatever, and that's the issue? Or is this that these schools are genuinely not performing or doing what they need to do to get kids to do better in school? Because I think, I guess I'm not sure which we're talking about, because here it looks like, this is, we're talking about clustering here, right? We're talking about the highest-needs kids are all together, and they're all in the same schools. And that's not quite the same as saying these are schools that are deficient in practice, or in resources, or in other characteristics that we might want to look at in these schools. I think there might be a combination, but I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know, which one are we talking about? Because, you know, let's talk about Frog Hollow, for instance, right? Oh, that's nasty. It's like a bug will fly in there, yeah. Frog Hollow, right? We got Sanchez, and we have Burns, right? I don't think we have anyone else in that area, right? Those schools are like 40, 50% ELL, right? Like, duh, like, by definition, achievement's going to be low, right? Because you're testing them in English, and they're bilingual, right? So is that a deficiency of the school? Is that a deficiency of the policy? You see what I'm trying to say? Like, it just seems like, like, there's a bit of a tautological thing where it's like, is this really just about clustering, or is this about performance?
Yep.
And are we conflating the two? I'll take your word, you know, I'll take your word for as far as the data, but I guess I'm just, like, still on the fence as to what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, so I would want to dig into the digital schools and student-level data before making any judgments about, at that level. What I do think we're looking at here is a bit of both of the issues you're talking about, right? So you have a concentration of need, and we've established the kids in Hartford are, have less of a chance to be accepted into magnet schools. Although, again, you have range of performance in magnet schools. We're looking at performance as growth, right? So even if I, even if I'm starting at a level, do I have the potential to gain? And so what we're acknowledging here, and we're choosing deliberately to be forward-looking about it, rather than diagnose all the driving factors behind it, is to say, right now, kids growing up in these communities don't have access to the neighborhood schools that are generating growth. They have high needs, and we are about to embark on a process of figuring out which schools to invest in, and which schools to consolidate or reconfigure at different grade sizes, or different grade configurations, different school sizes, different openings, different closings. And so as we do that, if we truly want to create a world where all students in Hartford have the opportunity to be successful, we need to think very deliberately about what the new world looks like for these students.
I guess, I thank you for that. I guess I would agree with that. But on the other hand, what do we start misdiagnosing based on the problem, right? So you're saying that, you know, you're saying that Burns is not doing as well as Parkville, right? And Parkville has, what is, does Parkville have K-38 or K-35?
K-35.
K-35, right? So you're saying the reason that Parkville does better is because it has K-5?
No, I, yeah.
Well, you see what I'm saying? Because then we start getting, you know, getting into these problems of, like, misdiagnosing the problem. Because if we start comparing Parkville to Burns and say, well, the characteristic, here are the characteristics that are different.
Yep.
And in reality, it may have nothing to do with grade configuration. It may have nothing to do with the fact that it's a community school, because, you know, Burns and Parkville have community resources. It may have something to do purely and solely with the mix of kids that are there.
Yep.
Right? And so that's what I'm concerned about, is like, being very precise about what we're saying is the academic difference, the differences in the performance that we're bringing to the table to actually say, well, we're going to change this at Burns or at Parkville or wherever. That's what I'm concerned. I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time.
No.
But I just want to be very clear that we don't start making jumps about, you know, what this school does versus this school, when it could be student, it could be the students that are there. Like I said, it could be some other, you know, some other characteristics that we're not seeing in the numbers, right? It could be strong leadership at the principal level, right? Maybe the principal's just like an awesome instructional leader, and that could be, you know, the defining factor. So I guess I would be interested, maybe, so maybe I'll push you guys looking forward. Is some, like, do you have qualitative information about, like, this is why Parkville's a good neighborhood school?
Yeah.
This is why West Middle is a good neighborhood school? And we heard from 50 parents, and they said, this is really what does it for me at this school? So that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think that's, those are some of the answers I think we're all looking for in this work, and that are incredibly challenging to find. So I would put out a couple of things. One is, there is never, in any school, a single answer to why it's been successful, unfortunately, right? Like, even if you can point to, oh, it's a great principal, well, what did that great principal create around her, right? Well, did she attract different teachers? Did she help them grow? Did she do something else for the culture of the school? Like, there's all these other factors that come into it. So I would put that out there as a starting place. And the other starting place I'd put out there is, we're approaching this work with an assumption that actually the children in the communities here in Hartford that we serve are the children in the communities that we serve. And so our focus is on figuring out, regardless of whether we think that they're, and we assume that all have incredibly high potential and the ability to thrive and be successful. And our job is to figure out how do we create schools where the likelihood of that is highest? So I would never want to sit in front of anybody and say, okay, a school that is a K-8 is failing because it's a K-8, or because it has too few kids a grade. I would never say that. What I would say is, a school that has 30 children per grade across nine grade levels is less likely to be a school where teachers are going to be able to grow in ways that help student learning. And in a world where we have a lot of kids with significant challenges, that's a really tough spot to be in. And so I think it's all about creating those conditions. And as we go through this process, you all say, well, we have a school that is succeeding the way it is, and it's been succeeding the way it is for 15 years, and it's not draining resources from other schools in a meaningful way, and we want that to remain the case, then it's entirely possible that you would also look at that school through the lens of these guiding principles and be like, yeah, it's kind of there, presumably. I wish I had simpler answers for your questions.
Yeah, no, no, I think this is a good conversation. And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to, like, I guess I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time. I guess what I'm saying is, I want to be precise about, you know, if we feel very clearly that, like, the grade, you know, the number of students in a grade matters, okay, fair enough, you know? And then we say, you know, we look at these schools and we say, like, we think that this is like a clear takeaway. But I guess I just want to be careful about that, just be precise.
And again, it's all the trade-offs, right? You could say, yep, that matters, but it's not the most important thing to us, and we're going to make an investment in a different way, and we're going to have 35 kids in a grade. And I would never want to fall on my sword, or have any of you do that, about any single factor, right? What we're acknowledging is that, in a world where you don't have, in the context we observe here in Hartford, it is challenging to turn the corner with some of those contextual factors in place.
When you say 50% of the children of school age, you're speaking about their residents.
Correct.
You're not talking about the population of these particular schools. Because I think what Tiffany was alluding to before is that many of the kids that are residents there have chosen to go to schools out of their neighborhood.
Yes. Yeah, I think it stands to reason, given the number of seats that are filled, that that's happening. And that there are a lot of kids who are still there, who are in schools that are struggling.
I just want to interject. We need to flush this out a little more, and I agree with Robert. Robert's not trying to give you a hard time, but I think I'm going to give you a hard time. In the sense that we need to, again, I'll let you finish your presentation, but I just wanted, for the record, because we're looking at this for the first time, I would like for the members to sort of think about this, figure out what questions they have, and then if we can have either another meeting or smaller meetings, so that we can get all the rest of our questions in. Because Robert, that was an interesting question that Robert had, to Tiffany's point. And I think I want to flush that out more. So I don't, I'm not taking a vote, but do you guys agree, disagree? Should we have another follow-up meeting for questions?
Oh, for more questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time we're hearing all of this, so I think it would be helpful to, like, process for those of us that are processes.
Yes.
All of us.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
More like a, you know, what I'd like to see, like, the next step, right? Is like, you know, you showed earlier this graphic that had, you know, typical, a typical K-38 school, and then you showed the one that was K-5. I mean, without naming individual schools, I mean, could you say, like, you know, we see this cluster of schools, and we see, like, this is how things could be, things could be rearranged in a way that we think makes sense according to the strategies of the principals that we have? And maybe you guys have this already. Does that make some sort of sense at all? Like, if you take these three or four schools, they're all K-38. But if we made, you know, we made two of them into K-5, and then we could offer X, Y, and Z compared to this, and then we could streamline the hiring process, and, you know, this is how the instruction could improve, something like that. I think that gives people a sense of, like, you know, what's actually changing, and how would this look from a hypothetical perspective? And then maybe later on, you know, like, right after, you know, talk about where does this sort of, like, change fit in the district? Am I making?
Yeah, you are. I think what you're describing is...
Because I think you guys have some good ideas as to what you're saying, but I think it just needs to be, like, maybe, like, put a practical, sort of, like, you know, tangible example to it, you know what I mean? Without scaring people and saying, you know, here's what we're going to do with your school. And like, I don't think people want to hear that. But I think people are willing to hear, if this changed, whatever that change is going to look like, here's how this district, or these group of schools, could benefit, and how they could look, be in a better position to help the kids that are there. You know what I mean?
That's exactly right. So I think what you've done is describe the work of the next several weeks.
Okay.
Right? And so the, no, no, I think that's exactly right. And so the process that the Superintendent has created here is one where we, with all the input that has been provided, outline the principles which we want to design towards, right? And if everyone agrees upon those, you say, great, we have a shared fact base and a shared understanding of what we're going towards. That gives us a basis for getting to the exact issues that you described. Okay, so specifically, in this neighborhood, these schools, you know, School A and School B, we propose to consolidate and turn to the following type of configuration, and here's why. And those are decisions that, you know, are led by district leadership, that we support the analysis of and inform, particularly focusing on the financial and staffing implications of that, and the school design implications, and say, well, how likely are you to get close to your guiding principles? That's exactly the work that's coming over the next several weeks. So I'm glad that you're looking in that direction as well.
Right, but just, and I just want to clarify, just for viewers at home and in the audience, we're not asking you for recommendations of different models. So that's, I just want people to understand that. He's asking for an example, so that we can sort of wrap our minds around what we can do, what we can't do, and, you know, how creative we can be when we're talking about recreating, or reconfiguring in schools. So I just want to point that out. So we look forward to that. And again, I guess we're going to, through the Superintendent and Christina, figure out how we can get members in front of you to ask more questions.
Absolutely.
By all means.
I do have one more question.
Ms. Lemon?
No, no, I didn't know if you were, like, wrapping up, or if I could ask one more question for clarification while we take this home process. So back on the page 22, I was, I'm just trying to figure out, what's the color? Like, what do the colors mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yep.
No, on slide 20, yeah, the, no, it's...
The other one.
The other one.
This one. This one.
Yep, so we just, for each column, basically, this is a, each column, it's a heat map that shows us. So green basically is a less needy or more better situation. So, let's see, in the first column, Southwest has, and Upper Albany have the most elementary school seats in neighborhood schools that are generating above-average English language arts growth, right? And the zeros are all red. In the, in the third column, just to pick another example, the more students who qualify for free reduced lunch, the more red the cell is. So it's a way for us to try to aggregate all this data. We're not trying to create any sort of, sort of, you know, perfect formula. But can we look at it together and be like, ooh, where do we see a lot of red going on here? That's a place that probably merits more attention for us.
Thank you.
So we wanted to call it a few more implications as we wrap this up. The first one was around access. The second one is around this issue we've been talking about, around how do you actually design and structure schools? And so the implication here is that we want to incorporate structures that we see in high-performing schools around the country, right? And the ones we've talked most about here are, how do we ensure that we have the right size and configuration to support effective professional learning and collaboration, critically important in a district that has significant teacher turnover, significant proportion of novice teachers? And how do we have, create a world in which we can differentiate instruction and really personalize attention for the kids who are farthest behind, for whatever reason? And so a lot of the findings that we've shared today are giving evidence of what is it, to what extent do we have those conditions today? And how might we need to change those conditions, conditions in schools, to make this more likely? Just building the conditions in schools of saying, okay, I'm going to have four teachers per grade, or I'm going to have, you know, 80 students and the ability to regroup, because it doesn't mean it's actually going to happen, right? So what we're just talking about is creating conditions where we can then build on that to move forward. And there are other conditions that have been put in place in the district. You talked about curriculum earlier, and others that are being put in place that increase the chances of success in any given school. The third implication here is about cost and scale. And by scale here, we mean the size of the schools. And so what we've started to get to here is that unless you're willing to support a really large K-8 school, right, so you can get that scale at each grade level, then what you're probably looking at here is a world where you have elementary schools, and middle schools, and high schools, particularly in the neighborhood models. And based on what we see, and we haven't shared it here, but what we see around attrition from the district, and the different mix of configurations, and we see this in choice districts around the country, how clear can you make the pathways, particularly in neighborhood schools? So I know when I send my daughter to kindergarten, I have a sense of, what does that mean for the middle school and high school she's likely to attend, unless I make a decision based on the interests of my child that is different? And right now, with a hodgepodge, you increase the chances of unintended attrition out of the system. That creates a lot more variability for you. So you can start to imagine that the scenarios that come up will largely focus on how do we create elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, in those clear pathways. All of that means, and Superintendent said this right at the beginning, so it's not a surprise to say it, but this does imply that some of those under-enrolled and underutilized schools close and/or consolidated in the future, given the enrollment trends in the district, given the financials of the district, and given the goals we have. And again, this is crucial, what do we want to build in the future, right? The Superintendent, I think, has led the district on a path that is not defensive in the face of local context. It's about thinking about what do we want to build towards in the future? And that's where these guiding principles are designed to get you. The last three things I just want to call out as implications here. One relates to the system-level supports, and we've alluded to a lot of these. The system, the district, has a crucial role to play in helping school leaders and their teams implement high-quality instruction. We've talked about curriculum, we've talked a little bit about novice teachers, about community partnerships. All of these are focused on improving the quality of teaching and learning, and the system has a role to play in helping make that happen in schools. And we don't want to ignore that in any way, because, again, the conditions in schools are only part of the equation. The fifth piece we want to call out is specific to human capital, to talent. There are some evolutions that we think are really important here in Hartford. These came out of our diagnostic work in the spring, accelerating the hiring timeline, using our understanding of teacher strengths and performance to inform their assignment, to ensure that people who move into instructional leadership positions are true instructional leaders, and that we have evidence for that. What we see in high-performing districts around the country, where they have made the quality of instruction and the ability of teachers to grow and learn to implement that instruction core to the change, they have generally shifted resources away from what would typically what would typically be non strategic uses of dollars, and how we pay teachers, or how we support professional development, to more strategic uses of dollars. It's a much bigger conversation. And the report we released earlier this year with the Gates Foundation is called Igniting the Learning Engine. It actually outlines for four separate systems exactly how they spend their money differently than typical along, along these lines. And so these are some of the issues that we would encourage the district to think about and move towards as well, and that will come up again and again. And then the last piece here is, again, something the superintendent has talked about in terms of collaboration with the city. We're going to put the lens on it here, specific to transportation and choice policies. There's obviously a lot of history and a lot of policy, and a lot of factors embedded in how the magnet system works in Hartford. Generally speaking, if you think that you want, if part of your strategy were to improve opportunities, is to improve opportunities for, for kids currently going to neighborhood schools, you can either, if you believe magnets are better opportunities for them, increase the opportunity for them to attend magnets, and/or improve the quality of neighborhood schools. We focused almost all of our attention through this presentation on improving conditions in neighborhood schools. We want to name here that there's a set of strategies one could pursue here at a district and city level, about REIT and probably state level, about how we think about transportation and choice, to ensure that if there are high quality seats in magnet schools that would benefit kids in Hartford who don't currently have access to those seats, what policies would need to change in order to make that happen? So we name that as another implication of this work. And then the last thing I wanted to share as we, as we wrap up this conversation, pending any other questions, is just the specific next steps that are coming. Apparently, it's time to go home.
Exactly. I'm being adjourned.
Stan, can you still get him?
Yeah, no. Keep going.
That's amazing, though, that only the ceiling lights are off and everything else is working. Someone just flipped a switch.
Timer.
Oh, that explains it. So on November 21st, there is more conversation happening around this idea of the district reimagines, going a level deeper in what this could look like in terms of the types of options that Mr. Cotto mentioned that could be, be down the road for the district. And then on December 19th, the district restructuring actually is when you start to look at, okay, specific scenarios for reconfiguring the school network, the school portfolio, and looking at what the resource implications of that are. What does it mean for use of dollars? What kinds of things could we be doing differently for the benefit of kids if we make those moves? So that is where we are in the process and where we go from here.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brusher.
Have to pay the light bill. I'm questioning about the, the great teacher concept. You said the, the great teacher teaches novices? A novice teacher? Is there a provision for teaching, you know, new teachers?
Yeah, so I think to elaborate a little bit more, what we're describing is, in a, in a school or a district where you have a lot of novice teachers, they need additional support in order to grow into excellence and being successful. And so, one of the things we, we see happening more and more is, and in some other places that's certainly not new, is that the most highly skilled, highly effective teachers not only teach, but they take on a leadership role in supporting the growth and development of novice teachers in their building.
Yep, and I meant the mechanics of it. Got a, you might call him a lead teacher?
Sure, that's one model.
Yeah, a lead teacher. Now, when will he get the time to teach or to help out with the novice teachers?
Yeah, so I think there's, there's a bunch of models that are emerging around the country. One of the ones we look at a lot is, is what's been happening in Washington DC. So they offer different, different options for school principals to decide how they want to structure their schools. But for example, one of them is, I, you teach a 50% load. You teach half the number of classes, and you use the remainder of that time to be pushing into other classrooms to observe instruction, provide feedback, and lead collaboration sessions. Obviously, there's a trade off with that, and someone else has to teach those other classes. So do you, right, you have to figure out how you, how you navigate that. But that's one, one model. There are other models that say, you know what, our teachers, for example, might only be teaching five out of seven periods, and some of those classes are relatively small, and I've taught this curriculum and I'm really skilled at it. So if you, you know, for a stipend, I'm willing to use my other time, and we have after school time structured for, for collaboration. It varies school by school, but the point is to be deliberate about it. And there are models that exist that allow that to happen for those lead teachers.
And then, you know, I can see the mechanics getting something kind of sticky. For instance, a master teacher and a novice teacher getting the same pay? Not quite, that doesn't seem a fit. They would be like, giving a reward to the master teacher by giving him a little more money? Is that, would that be in the plan?
I think that's certainly a possibility. I think it's a district policy question, and probably something that would come up with, with your, your labor partners. I don't think anybody, I haven't seen a model where a master teacher and a novice teacher would be paid the same unless the workload or contribution were radically different.
I've seen some of these things in action, and didn't, didn't work out as they thought it would, because of the, well, the master teacher should be teaching most of the time, and he's, half the time, he's teaching novices. Or whatever, whatever you consider a novice, a number of people didn't think they were, they thought they were master teachers, but they ended up as novices. And as a result, you know, there was a little friction that developed. But these are the things that, you know, the devil in the details, and they come out after everything's been set. So I, I don't know about whether this has been thought out, because everything seems to be, you know, well, well planned, but now we have to deal with people.
Yeah, I think, I think you're making a really crucial point. The work is incredibly hard, and even with the conditions in place that look like the conditions where we see success, that's not a guarantee of success. And how the adults manage the work is ultimately going to be a big driver of success. I don't think, I think that's true every place.
Can I ask something, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Real quick? Two quick things. One of them, it'll be very quick, I'm not going to give up on this. So as we continue this conversation around restructuring and consolidation, we're rethinking the best way to utilize our schools, right? And to teach our kids. Part of the conversation going forward, I hope, is, as we continue down this road, is how do we best utilize and make sure that our students have good athletic programs that they can use, that we offer? I know when your, your partner was up there last time, it's something I brought up. If we don't have a good athletic model as well, I think it's going to be a big deterrent for parents and kids anyways, whatever structure we have going forward. That's just one thing, right? That's just one thing I'm passionate about. I'm not saying athletics is the, is the, is the, is the big thing, right? So that's the first one. The other one is a question, and if you can give me a short answer, that'd be awesome, because I know people want to go home. We've been talking tonight primarily about students who qualify for reduced or free lunch, and we've also been talking about English ELL or students with disabilities. Any factors, any other factors that we should start considering down the road as we continue these conversations, that you might want to at least give us a head, a head start on?
Yeah, it's a really interesting question, is how do district leaders think about student need, and differentiating student need? I think the, the two things I would put out there for you are, one, obviously, student performance is the ultimate indicator of how kids are doing in school. So depending on what purpose you're using the data for, looking at incoming performance or prior year performance for a student, has a big impact, I think teachers do this regularly, is figure out, well, what is, what is, what is each child coming in with? And how do we support them? I think the second thing that is coming up in districts all over the country is, to our point about free reduced lunch, is what are other measures of poverty or need that are more nuanced? So we see districts starting to look at issues like student mobility, look at direct certification, do you look at chronic absenteeism? There's a whole slew of factors that largely, it really depends on what's the purpose you want the data for, and what is available to you and reliable for the purpose that you, that you want.
Thank you.
I have a question. So as we're doing the input and data gathering process, I'm really curious about this idea that students basically learn better or have higher levels of achievement when they are in economically diverse settings. So how do we grapple with that, looking across some of the data that you gave, talking about like, how Hartford is? Disproportionately, we have more students who receive free and reduced lunch than even some of our urban centers in the state. English language, learn all of them, Tiffany says. I believe her, she's a data guru. And then we have, like, really low achievement. So how are we going to think about dispersing the concentration of need when that really is the composition of our city? Like, I'm just really, I would really like to know, maybe if you have encountered this issue, and you have encountered this issue in other districts, I'm sure. And I guess, like, how are people responding to this concentration of need as it connects to student achievement? Given the data.
Right, so, so I think you've identified the two paths, right? One is, do you have the ability within your district or across district lines to create more heterogeneous student bodies, right? And that exists here, obviously, in some form with your, with your magnet schools. There are, as you point out, lots of districts around the country. Cleveland is one, Indianapolis is similar to you, and this way, Holyoke up the, up the road is facing similar factors. Where, Baltimore, I think, is another, where the proportion of kids who are growing up in low income households is just so high that you are going to have a situation where you will have schools that have overwhelming numbers of kids growing up in low income households and communities. And so the answer that is, I think, is largely about, well, well, we've defined the size of the mountain, basically. And the question is, how do you, how do we take what we know about schools that are succeeding, even in those contexts? Because the averages will always mask the variation, and say, how do we make more, how do we create more models that are working? And I think some of the practices that are embedded in the principles that you all have contributed to here are those practices, but doesn't guarantee anything. But I think that's, that's, that's the size of the challenge.
And is that to your, no, I'm done. I mean, it wasn't, there was no answer, right?
It's, it's, yes, I wish, yeah. I wish any of us could answer that question better.
And I was going to bring it back to your two, you made two points, right? That either increase the quality of the schools or the experiences in the neighborhood schools, or, you know, get at the magnet, through the magnet, given that we already have. We live, half of us, half of our district, if you will, lives in that space, for that to be considered as not a solution, but consideration in, in planning.
Yeah, and let's acknowledge that on average, the data's clear, right? On average, a student in a low income household in a heterogeneous school outperforms other students in, in more homogeneous, high need schools. I would acknowledge two things. One is, that number is still not a high number. And two, you have magnet schools that are high performing and magnet schools that are not, from a growth standpoint. And so I don't think the answers are going to be, you know, any single, any single approach. Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say too, that not only was this helpful, but the fact that we have a very, very clear timeline has been helpful for us as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. That's it.
All right, so I just, walking away with action steps, and we're going to have a follow up meeting after members are able to go through the material and pose some questions. We're not going to forward questions or anything like that. We're just going to come up with a date and work that out. So, any other questions?
Are we going to acknowledge the election results at any point in this meeting? I mean, it is our first public meeting where we have Chairman Craig Stallings and Juan Hernandez, who were voted back in to the Hartford Board of Education. I think they deserve a round of applause. Just last night. I mean, they, they really are excellent community leaders, and I really think that it's awesome that we're going to continue this work together. And it's great to have like, some new veteran board members. And I know I'm like, overstepping my boundary, but I think that you all do amazing work, you're amazing community leaders, and you should be acknowledged for that.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm kind of shy and bashful when she, she didn't know that. So I'm going to end this meeting quickly before someone else does and embarrasses me.
She's getting you back.